Get a motion for. I'm making a motion to approve the meeting agenda. Discussion. Um, no, I'm like, we might have any businesses just talked about wind. Um, just touch on that. Uh, hearing all there, um, all favor. Close, motion carry. Um, attendance are always here. Um, a football being this, uh, for June eighth first. Okay, would then be, um.
Regularly give a public hearing.
So, um, wait, right? I get a motion to accept, uh, meeting match from June eight.
Yeah, I made it. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the June eight regular meeting.
Second. Discussion. Hear none, all favor.
Aye.
I, uh, pose, motion carry, uh, July eleventh, that would have been the meeting that, um, we attended with the board. Uh, joint discussion. That we invited to. I can get a motion to accept.
I'll make the motion to accept.
I'll second your motion, Dave.
Any discussion? Hear none, um, all favor.
Aye.
I, um, pose, motion carry.
Yeah, I think I've got Brandon from doing a good job of.
Yeah, I wasn't sure how that one was gonna pan out, you know, it was a joint meeting and they could, he means the whole, whole thing, but then the part that we were, it seems to take account of what happened.
Um, public comments. Public comments.
I just wanna say thanks, you guys did, um, outstanding job, you're doing an outstanding job, lot more to be done in this township. There's certain people and alliances that are working on that right now, and we're looking for people to move into different opportunities, so. I want you to know, we're moving forward with lots of, uh, remedies that are available to us, so thank you.
Any others? Yes.
I'd like to second his, thank you for everything that you guys have done, you've worked your butts off, we appreciate you greatly. And, um, our PC's end of the webpage is looking fantastic, thank you.
My friend's got a lot of time on that, so. Uh, anybody else? Yes.
I wanna go with them, even though I'm not in your township, I come because of, uh, the meetings that you've been having on the wind. You see those from miles away, um, I've been very impressed with the dialogue that you've had throughout this whole process. I was very disappointed in the board when you guys had your joint meeting. And they knew it was coming and they needed time and they couldn't ask a single question. I went to the PC, county PC hearing over there and Mr.
Johansson.
Was Jo- Jo-.
Johansson.
Johansson, pretty much everything he recommended is what they were taking up with you guys. And that's what they changed it to, and I found issue with that because he was one of the spokesmen for a Apex meeting. And the board chose to listen to his recommend- recommendations without even coming to one, I don't know as I've ever seen him at your meetings with wind. And the ordinance that you guys wrote, yeah, I mean, there's a couple things I'd want, 'cause I'm greedy, I'd want maybe better. But there's Pearson, there's Sydney, there's Eureka, and now there's Pine, that have very protective ordinances, stricter than yours, and your guys made it so they could. Apply for a, a.
Waiver.
A waiver. You guys protected your whole township, and what they did is uncalled for, and we came tonight mainly to let you know. We got your back, if it comes down to you guys ever decide to do any recalls or referendums and need help with signatures, we will gladly help you. Because this was a disservice to you guys, they hired you guys to do a job and didn't even listen to you or ask you questions. So, I'm sorry that happened to you, but thank you for writing a good ordinance.
Thanks, yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, Charlie. Uh, yeah, Robert Scott made a comment that, uh, the ordinance that you guys passed was really a compromise ordinance. Because most people don't want turbines in the, you know, in this community, in the rural environment, and, uh, I think it was, it was a astute comment. And you guys did a great job at balancing all the issues, uh, taking a year and a half, I, I'd like to you to consider making a resolution condemning the board for their, for their actions against you. And put that into the minutes and have that as an official part of the record.
I commend everybody on the planning commission, um, for standing up what they believe in, doing their research, and I would like to see that continue on through the solar as well. We don't, we don't need to ask people, let's do our own research, but let's protect everybody, I, I don't think we need to ask the board. Cause they're not gonna do what you're gonna write up anyway, so, um, I, I think you guys do your research, come up with a safe and protective, whatever way you feel. Stick to your guns, do it for yourselves and the citizens, thank you.
I know you're all looking forward to putting all this wind stuff behind you, but the way this played out here in Kano Township, unfortunately, we've seen it before. I'm from Douglas Township, their board, or planning commission turned over a so-so ordinance to the board. And they went down through the Apex wishlist, made some changes and took a so-so one and made it bad. You guys put a lot of blood and sweat and tears into this ordinance, you wrote a good one, just to turn it over to the board to go right down that Apex wishlist. You guys did your gut job, hold your head up, you did a good job, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for representing your citizens, because the board did not, you guys have. And they are basically representing the very few. They're not listening, they're not listening to their citizens at all, at all, and we do recognize everything you have done. And it's very appreciative, thank you.
Any others? I'll call the public comments, thank you people. Uh, Dave, um.
We go first.
Okay, uh, month of June, there were three permits issued, that was, uh, one was at seventy-four sixty-five North Johnson Road, that's a forty-six by thirty-six pole barn. Uh, there was, uh, home addition at one-one-five-four-two Lake Shore Drive. And there was another pole barn at sixty-five oh-five Camerack Road, and that was a pole barn, and, uh, for the month of July. There's eight permits, two are denied, um, seventy-four forty-seven Binding was a new deck and a swimming pool. The deck is thirty by thirty, pool is fifteen by thirty. Okay, a front porch with the roof, uh, one-one-eight-nine-three Burke Drive, and that was denied, they wanna go five foot onto the road right away. Um, supposedly the road commission gave them permission, but I don't know, that's, that goes to the ZDA. Uh, seventy-five forty Schmeed is a pole barn, that was de- denied because of the height, and it was too large, uh, being compared to the size of the dwelling. Um, one zero-two-four-two Bale Road was a pole barn, uh, one-one-nine-two-three Binding was a pole barn, a lot of pole barns here. Uh, nine-six-five-seven, uh, M forty-six, uh, a home with a attached garage. And there's one zero-seven-six-four M forty-six, a pole barn, and then there's, uh, sixty-nine hundred West Elmy Road is a pole barn with, oh, I'm sorry. A lean-to on a pole barn, and, uh, that's it.
It's a lot of activity.
Yeah, good.
Of the pole barns, I guess, how was the, you know, we have this kinda open issue on accessory buildings and the twenty-five percent of the dwellings, how was that applied, I guess, with these pole barns, was that just like, not considered?
Well, it was, uh, and then one I denied was, uh, I think it was over a hundred percent of the dwelling is, uh, what it was. And so I denied it for that reason and the height, I could dig the permit. That was on, uh, my Schmeed, yeah, seventy-five forty Schmeed.
Okay, so, so that was the hundred percent of, that exceeded a hundred percent of the dwelling?
I, yeah.
Okay.
Or it was a hundred percent of the dwelling, um, anyway, it was over, the level, well, not according to our zoning book.
Okay, cause I know we had talked at the previous meetings until we get a resolution for that twenty-five percent, we were gonna, I guess, take that into consideration so people aren't getting denied right now.
Okay.
So it's a hundred percent, plus what you're saying there?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, you're, you're saying, you guys want me kinda waive the, uh, if their, their size compared to the dwelling, waive that and the height, how about the height?
Well, I mean, I, I think the, you've got some direction from the board, right, on that?
I'm sorry.
But I think you've had some direction from the board on that, and like, at least one member of the board, of the twenty-five percent?
For, uh. At what?
Uh, the twenty-five percent rule, I feel like, I, I thought that you had maybe gotten some direction from someone on the board about that.
Um, not on, uh, kinda, since it's being worked on, it's got, most likely gonna change by you guys, nobody said it, well, go ahead and, we'll waive that because we know it's gonna change, but they can't.
And I don't know that we can waive it, it would probably have to come from the board, I would think, but I think that discussion was had to like, we don't wanna deny people, and then what was the height, what was?
I can tell you real quick.
Heights dependent on is the location can be varied, and I don't think that's something written in our.
That's right here. Okay, size of, uh, it's over a hundred percent of the size of the dwelling and the height is over fourteen feet. Um, their height, hopefully they have it written down there, he wants eighteen feet.
Eighteen feet, okay, and that, who was that, that was denied?
That was, uh.
Bristol.
Bristol, yeah, Jerry Bristol.
He was denied for both height and, okay, and the other one didn't have anything to do?
Height and, uh, yeah. No, it's from setback.
That was improper.
Because, uh, oh, no, that wasn't setback, that was.
It's supposed to go right away, you remember the way?
Oh, yeah, it wasn't a pole barn, it was a, a porch addition, it was put up in front of the house.
And we're gonna talk a little more about that a bit later.
Well, so I think we're reading, everything I'm reading says lot coverage percentage, not percentage dwelling, unless I'm missing something.
We have it on, I think we'll get into it here in our, um, whole business, but.
Yeah, it says twenty-five percent of floor area on page thirty-four.
Yeah, that's, it's kind of a, I'll take where it's template on that.
Any else, Dave?
I'll give it to you now, that way, kinda.
Um, Dave, bring on anything from the board?
Just when I asked the last one about, uh, what you tell us, mostly for a turning for the solar and, yeah, it's gonna have a problem.
Very good, Dave.
In the master.
In the master.
No, no.
But they still have a.
He said they were, he's working a golden for roll, but he still didn't have, haven't gotten any more.
To get us a quote?
Yes.
Um.
I can tell you that, um. He told me last night that he spoke with role engineering today, that the gentleman that worked for the Lakeview, with Lakeview is retiring. So now he's waiting on a quote for another person from that.
From there, a new person.
Yeah, and we got him all pleasant. So, my belief is, is that you'll have that to your next board meeting, so we can move.
For, yes.
Yeah.
So, they'll basically have it, two meetings before we'll have it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
That's correct.
Can I get a list of those permits? Possible, that's the last few right now.
Okay, July, and he has, uh, June.
Um.
All right.
Okay. Whole business, um. The voting order, section three eleven accessory buildings, I guess back to what, um, we were kinda talking about a few minutes ago. Page thirty-four, I believe it is.
Thirty-three, thirty-four.
Thirty-three, thirty-four, in the ordinance book?
I have a few thoughts, um, the way we're interpreting A three, the very top item, um, on page thirty-four. So that was, that was the first thing, um, and I, in here, um, on the desk when we got here, there's this required yard diagram that I pulled from a MCA guide. And I think it's important to, to read, you know, no accessory building shall be erected in the required front yard, doesn't say the front yard, which is defined, um, specifically as well. Um, when you look at this diagram, the re- uh, required yard is with the striped shading there. And the way I'm, as I look further into this ordinance, the way I, I read that is the required yard is really the setback, the thirty feet. So, if your house is setback from the road a hundred feet, you still have a seventy-foot window to put an accessory building in front of your house. We're not saying you can't put it, period, so, but are, are we saying that people wanna build in that thirty-foot setback? Is that where you, cause that was, I guess.
Yeah, there, there's been times of that, now, the other thing is, if, uh, I don't know, but they have that. Some other township have it where you can't have it in the front yard, and I, I, I don't know if there's a safety, I'm not in the, the fire department or nothing, I don't know, but. Or maybe it's up for the, the way it looks, maybe they, uh, townships don't want somebody to have it in front of their house directly.
While on attached condition towards the front, but not a setback.
If it's attached.
Yeah, exactly.
You can go as far as you wanna even, as long as you don't go past, uh, set there.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I don't see a need for a change, I guess, I mean.
I'm saying that they.
You have to stay on your own thirty.
I know what you're saying, I, I agree with you.
If you, if you had seventy feet, ten foot, you'd have, you'd have sixty feet, you could put a shed or a pole in that area.
Yeah. Yeah. Even if, if they put it in front of the house, it shouldn't make a difference.
The way you, the way.
See, I mean, you guys, how do you guys know about it, that's.
But that, that also states not to exceed one hundred square feet in area.
Well, that's a habit.
The very last few words.
Yeah, hold on.
All right, I'm trying to read it, no accessory building shall be erected in the required front yard, except that on lots with frontage on a lake and with a single family dwelling. Not more than one accessory building may be erected in the required front yard, but such accessory buildings shall be located at least fifteen feet from the shoreline and shall not exceed one hundred square feet in area, I think they're talking about lakes.
And that one just from, that part is right.
Yeah, that's not, that's the way I read it, that's, that's just for lake houses.
Is the number three for the lake.
Yep.
Well, the first, first part of the first sentence is for everything, and then it goes on to, it probably explains the lakes.
So I, I don't really think we need to make a change to number three.
Uh, the, it already, we already permit front yard, as long as it falls outside of the required front yard, which is the rep setback and then follows other setbacks.
Any other questions on that, Dave?
No, I, I agree with you.
Okay.
You know, I was just wondering, uh, I never looked up, uh, front yards, our definition, um. Does it, what's the, what's it say for definite, does it specify that as a lakefront property that the front yard is, uh.
On the side.
Considered the lakeside, it does?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I was just curious, I just wanted to make sure it covers that, because there's, uh. Another township that they're gonna have to make a change on that because it doesn't clarify that. So we, we don't have to disregard what I was talking about on that one, but.
Everybody else good with that? Um, and, and the next one, I guess, was being questioned was bullet point number two in a B.
Right. The total area of, uh, accessory dome should not exceed twenty-five percent of the floor area of dwelling, on purpose five or more acres additional accessory buildings areas not to exceed. Uh, one hundred percent of the dwelling, we don't, maybe we're superior, subject to the segment due and approved by the fire commission.
So this is trumping the lot percentage requirement, because most times if you live on a small lot.
Yeah.
You're gonna get. You're gonna be severely hindered from this part, not the other part, so, I, I think the other part protects from people putting huge buildings on small lots, and I think is what we're trying to get after. Now, if you have ten acres. They're saying you can go to a hundred percent, but I know with storage and whatnot, if you had ten acres, well, why, why should we say that you can't build a hundred by a hundred? Somewhere on the property, as long as you follow all the other required setbacks.
So, like, well, I'm gonna use Bristol as an example, just 'cause I don't know the guy personally, but I know what he's doing out there. Uh, he's kinda set up an LCC for bulk storage and stuff like that, so I mean, that's probably what he's going after, but maybe he should be taking it and having it as far as the type of permit he's.
If he's gonna use it as business, he'll have to, uh, apply for that.
That's what I'm wondering, that's.
And if, it's, uh, you say you do in that district, I don't know, I don't.
Well, it should be AR.
Yeah, I think, I think there is a use required for it, we'll give it to that later too, but I, I think.
He's not the only one out there that does that kind of thing, you know, puts a shingle up.
Right, but I think, I think the whole, whoever wrote this originally was trying to, I mean, i- ideally, you're trying to limit people building huge pole barns on small lots.
Right.
Well, the, the lot percentage requirements under the actual, you know, agricultural residential restrictions here, if you go, it says.
In that section.
In this section, that you're restricted to twenty-five percent lot coverage, so.
And that's true for residential too.
Right, a lot, they all have some sort of lot coverage percentage, so I, I don't know, I think we're, we're kinda hindering quite a bit with that being stated here.
So, what David, David there?
Just the, after the twenty-five percent of the floor, I crossed out drawing unit and roll lot size, but we talked about.
Twenty-five percent of the lot.
Oh, yeah, four area of the lot size.
Play found between floor area, just be of the lot size.
No. Yes.
And then I guess the question becomes, okay, does your house count towards, you know, can't have.
I think it does, you can, it's total coverage of buildings.
Total coverage of buildings with how you would interpret it, that, your house, your pole barn in total, that cannot exceed twenty, pick up twenty-five percent of your lot.
Which then, if we change that wording there, we're just double saying it later, and then we can't say the same, the other part is five acres and more, we can't have, we're not gonna have a five acre building.
And again, this does not apply to. I think that one maybe at the next meeting, we come back with some examples, maybe just verify that against others, I would be ready to change it now.
Well, I, I. I think, I, I think we could strength, I, I'm, I'm thinking about striking the first sentence out of that B two, because. In every residential zoning, we're already covered, because then the second part would then apply a hundred percent of the dwelling size on five acres or more. And then there's always a variance to be, to be able to be applied for.
But we can, we have to, because if we're changing something substantial, we'd have to have a public hearing, so we're going to change it all. I just wanna see if there's a definition for lot coverage.
Thoughts there, Dave, or no?
No, I think he's on the right page there, uh, um, lot coverage is important, of course, very important, um.
A lot, a lot, not.
It's nothing but accessory building, it was said.
There is a definition of lot coverage, the part of the lot occupied by buildings, including accessory buildings, so it's pretty clear.
As I said, I think, I think the, the, the use of this zoning is to restrict building large buildings on small lots. I mean, if you got five acres or more and you wanna build a large pole barn somewhere on it, as long as you're following setbacks and property lines, it's good. Good for you to be able to afford building a big pole barn, now, I live on a lake, I built a pretty big pole barn, I got a variance for it. I'm pretty much can't, I can't put another shed or anything on my property at this point, because I've maximized it.
Yeah, pretty much every z- district has a lot coverage in their little table, has its own table of.
And I think that's what restricts smaller lots from building larger buildings.
Well, makes sense to do that.
Right, and for, you got five acres, twenty-five percent of five acres, that's, that's a big building, twenty-five percent of a half an acre, now we're getting into some.
Also, flip side to that, there are some instances where a large building might end up being used for something less desirable or in an area, so.
Well, I mean, they, if they're found to be using it for something that isn't authorized in the ordinance, they get citation.
Supposed to.
I'll let Dave speak to that, um.
I know, but.
Yeah, he's got, he's got ears on the ground.
So, if I'm hearing. If I'm hearing, go right then, um, remove the, the, the floor area of drawing unit and just put parcel.
Uh, no, I think quantity just.
No, remove that section, we already state that later.
Go to your district.
And it defines it there.
Yeah, um, maybe we make reference to that, so that, yeah, cause it is kinda, you know, you read this, how, what's this in the general.
Yeah, I guess it's under the.
And then you gotta go to your, maybe we word it to, um.
General provisions.
There, there, there.
Well, we could just strike that sentence and say refer to individual zoning.
There's, there's a, a way around that though, you, you can actually add on to your home, attached garage for instance.
That's considered, you're a part of your main dwelling.
Main dwelling, that increases that square footage, then you can take twenty-five percent of what you, of that and add to a lot of your accessory building. There's way around that, but it's just kinda clear.
And, and I think that the twenty-five percent requirement limits a lot of people's building.
If you wanna detach two-stall garage in the building of a house, you can't put it on your garage.
Right, exactly.
If you go with the.
I, I, I agree with that, but that's what I'm saying, this, this outline, I'm not saying it's good or bad, but it's kind of a template that's kinda statewide, cause I got, I know probably people are running into this other, you know, way away from here. It's the same thing where you had to actually add on to his home in order to put a pole.
Right, and that's, that seems ridiculous, I mean.
It seems ridiculous, but.
I mean, cause, I mean, twenty-five percent, I mean, so if you had a huge house.
But if you're in a higher density residential area, even if it's three-acre parcel or something, I mean.
I guess we don't have a lot of those higher density residential areas here.
No, actually you do, yeah.
With three-acre parcels, well, you've got your lots and your lakes.
You want, you know, three-acre parcels, there's a lot of those around.
Actually, I had, uh, two acres, I lived on a lake, I was up with Lousley, I, Pauline, I had that house, and, uh. We had more than two detached accessory buildings there, and I said, come in, I wouldn't be able to mentally put them there, you know, because, uh.
Twenty-five percent of two acres.
Well, twenty-five percent would be okay.
Or twenty-five percent of a two thousand square foot house.
Yeah, well, that, the pole barn has, that.
Right, right, go along.
So what, what if we change the wording in B two to say, except for bona fide farms, the total area of all buildings and accessory buildings shall not exceed the lot coverage requirements as defined for each district? Like, I put the buildings and. Like, I put the buildings and accessory buildings, so they're not thinking, oh, my building is.
All structures, right, so.
Yeah, I think that's how it were to be on the.
This one, Bristol, are any of these actually running into the issues for this?
Uh.
That's.
I mean, it's what, you know, it's not, it works.
Well, it would just be the one on Schmied, and that was uh for the height, which is hundred, they wanted eighteen feet height, it's another fourteen feet. And it was a hundred percent, over a hundred percent of the dwelling, and that's ag residential, you can go up to a hundred percent if it's five acres or more, I believe it says.
So you have, and so you might could apply for special use for that then.
Or a variance.
A variance.
Yeah. But then, variances aren't supposed, I don't know how those.
No, but.
They're not supposed to be given out easy, they're supposed to follow like five or four categories there, it's got the unique circumstance and this and that.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're not supposed to.
Straightforward variance, right.
But.
So.
They could ask for one, I gotta turn it in, even if I feel that doesn't follow the guidelines.
Do you want me to make that a motion?
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that, like I said, that the, trying to read in what they were trying to do, and I think it was trying to limit your ability to build a large building on a smaller lot. I mean, even with what Joe said, if you got a three-acre lot, you got a two thousand square foot home, you're still pretty limited to how big you can build, because you're not to that five acre. But so, say you wanted to build a forty by sixty on a three-acre lot, and your neighbors are close, well, as long as you're following the other setbacks requirements, why, why would that really be an issue? Other than future uses of being whatever, that's, we can't control that with an ordinance. So I don't, I, I'm. As I said, it's already covered later on, you got a hundred percent if it's over five acres. This is really just covered by acres and smaller, which you've already had to deny permits, and that causes, like you said, the, the variance, application, time, or, I mean. We can make this a little more streamlined for citizens to, I don't think it's a bad thing.
Right, I agree.
Yeah?
Make a motion.
Did you write it down, Brandon?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Read it one more.
Uh, except for bona fide farms, the total area of all buildings, including accessory buildings, shall not exceed the lot coverage requirement as detailed for each, or defined for each district.
And then you're gonna go on, and find parcels five hours of more, five acres of more? Yeah, keep that word in the same.
Okay, so then, we would.
Is your motion just to eliminate that first sentence and then leave the rest?